Meeting for the budget to order for Apache Junction. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
President.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Waldron.
Here.
All members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Discussion and consideration of resolution number eighteen dash eighteen declaring as a public record and adopting the City of Apache Junction Classification Plan for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Your Honor, thank you. This is the compensation plan as part of the budgetary process each year to review and to discuss the compensation class and comp plan. The class and comp plan this year is a step, and we're proposing a step increase of two point five percent for city employees. Other than that, Matt, any other changes we have of the class and comp plan? So, that's really the first item is the discussion and consideration of that. Kathy, is there anything else that they?
Uh, no. This is the classification plan, all the components. This is the only time you will see this for adoption purposes because by adopting it tonight, you're inserting it into the final budget, and when you adopt the final budget, it'll be automatically part of that.
Okay.
Other than that, the two point five percent, I will just remind you, is the equivalent of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of an expenditure increase.
Governor Ducey called me and said we shouldn't give him more than one percent. So, you want to go over and above that?
We can take the rest out of her. Well, my thought was we had just done an increase for five percent for the water company, so that just canceled that out.
I have nothing further on this one.
Any discussion on this? Sounds very reasonable.
Yes, this is consistent with the classification plan that you've been implementing over the last several years, and nothing major either way on that.
And this is year by year, if the economy comes to a halt, we can just freeze temporarily like we did in the past.
We have done that in the past, and we did freeze it.
And now, when it's good, then we pass it along.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this vote on agenda item one doesn't, it's not a vote for the two point five percent, but just the plan, the classification plan, and then the compensation schedule, the vote for the two point five percent increase to wages is actually in the budget in item number two, if that makes sense.
Anyone have anything? So, in which case, I will call for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that resolution number eighteen dash eighteen, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as public record and adopting certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled City of Apache Junction Classification Plan for Fiscal Year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, City of Apache Junction Civilian Compensation Plan for Fiscal Year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, City of Apache Junction Recruit and Sworn Compensation Plan for Fiscal Year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and City of Apache Junction Flat and Hourly Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and declaring an emergency be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Consideration of approval for resolution number eighteen dash eleven, adoption of tentative budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, and giving notice of the time and place for hearing taxpayer payers for adoption of final budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is your first of two public hearings. This is the one that would set your tentative budget for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen. I would like to thank our department directors and our core team, Donna and her staff, Connie, Matt, Anna, for the great work they did in bringing forth the budget. Two weeks ago, we went over the budget for the mayor and city council. The budget includes assumptions both on the revenue and expenditure side, and they both are right around about a three percent increase in revenue, with very similar in expenditures, very modest changes that would include the two point five percent and a step increase mandated cost, so that's that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, mandated public safety personnel retirement system, two hundred and four thousand, mandated Arizona state retirement system as well at thirty six thousand, and then we also have in for a second household hazardous waste event that we would like to propose in the draft balanced budget for the city council at this time. We also have a one-time expense of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to invest in our replastering pool project and some wayfinding for the downtown. Your Honor, we're here to, we have department directors here tonight if there's any questions. Otherwise, this is the public hearing for your residents to give some input as well.
Any discussion or questions? So... My book is put together funny. So, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to speak on this subject? You have to approach the podium if you want to speak.
George Schroeder, two four four four, West Virginia. Now, with clarification, I just want to pick out one portion of this and tell me if I'm wrong. Does this include the mental health monies in the budget, what we're talking about right now? Yes or no?
The Health and Human Services Budget, is that what you're referring to? Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't want to be out of order. Seems to me we have a massive deficit between the services that we're paying for and getting money for and the people that are on the streets. Now, I know you approved something like a couple hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a few months ago for such services to the horizon. I'm not seeing it. I see the people still on my streets. They look like they're coming right out of the dirt. So, I'm saying in this budget, I think we need to sever all ties with the mental health system. They're not doing us anything. If you think they are, please give us more in writing that says they are. I see the people on the streets. They're, they're, they need a place. My culvert, my empty houses, they're not the place. I just want to say we need to sever ties with the mental health system. We need to let the state and the feds and the county do their job, and let's spend our money on other better things. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'd just like to clarify that we don't have any mental health money in this budget.
None.
Yes. Any further discussion on that? In which case, I will call for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that resolution number eighteen dash eleven, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, for the adoption of the tentative budget for the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, herewith setting forth the tentative estimates for the monies necessary for the public expenses of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and giving notice of the time and place for hearing taxpayers for the adoption of the final budget, and declaring an emergency be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make the motion.
So moved.
Then we will adjourn that meeting. And I'll call to order the regular work session. Roll call again.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
I'm still present.
Okay. Councilmember Struble.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Waldron.
Here.
All members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
I forgot what I had to say there. I'm sorry.
Presentation by and discussion with staff and members of the Health and Human Services Commission regarding fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And this is Kathy Conley.
Yes, Your Honor. And there are commission members here this evening to present their recommendations. I'll just give you a brief overview of what has happened. We listened to your comments earlier this year about speeding up the process. It was done even though in talking with the city attorney, the current agencies that are funded are operating under the contract with the four quarters, and you'll see some proposed changes with your next item. The commission met twice, interviewed all of the applicants, which included four applicants, and working with an eighty thousand dollar budget, and made recommendations based upon that available funding, and they're here this evening to give their presentation and answer your questions. And let me introduce them. You have Mary Erickson, who is the commission chair, Char Daniels, who is the vice chair, Dana Osborne, and Judy Borey. Carol Kousher is not here this evening.
Does anyone have any, do they want to present, or do we have any questions? How should we?
I'd like to hear how they came about determining the amounts for each of the applicants.
Mayor, council members, Mary Erickson, and the rest of the Health and Human Services Commission will try to answer your questions. And first of all, thank you for providing the amount for the needs, the Health and Human Services needs of Apache Junction. There is, there are great needs for not only our adults, but our children and our elders within our community, many of whom do not have adequate funds to meet even their needs for food, for housing, for, for services. So, the, the agencies that applied for funding provide essential services for our populations. And I'll go through each of the applicants and just a very general overview of what they applied for, and I think you do have that information as well. The first one was the Apache Junction Food Bank, and they requested fifty thousand, and, and first of all, we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of requests for funding and eighty thousand to disburse. So, yeah, it's, it's trying to figure out who gets what and how much. The, the commission recommended thirty three thousand be provided to the food bank, and the funds will be used to provide emergency food as well as to maintain their refrigerator, their truck and freezers, as well as the blocking cooler, to continue the services that they have been doing and to meet the needs of the, the populations within our community. In their presentation, they gave us a lot of statistics about the actual numbers of people that are coming in, and it's astounding to see that. They, last year, did not receive their full funding because they were not meeting the requirements of the contract. As they made their presentation and we took a look at what, you know, what they had done to make corrections, we were quite impressed to see the work that they had done, and actually, the outreach to obtain additional funding so that they're not dependent upon the city on an ongoing basis forever. But they did expand their horizon and, and also have a lot more checks and balances in place, and we were very pleased to see that progress within this agency. The second agency that requested funds was the Boys and Girls Club of East Valley, the Superstition Mountain branch, and they requested thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars, and we recommended allocation of twenty nine thousand dollars for a continuation of their programs for the academic success. And there were a number of programs within that to help children to become successful adults. So, and they too have, throughout the year, met all of the stipulations of their grant, of their funding for this past year, and are really doing a good job of meeting the needs of the children within Apache Junction. The Community Alliance Against Family Abuse, CAFSA, requested twenty thousand dollars, and we recommended sixteen thousand dollars. And again, it's, you know, we only have so much funds to be able to provide. And again, their funds were, will be used for intervention programs for the families of domestic, domestic abuse that include empowerment sessions, legal advocacy services, and general advocacy services for individuals within the City of Apache Junction. And finally, the United Way of Pinnell County requested ten thousand dollars for provision of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. And this program has been proven to be quite successful in helping children from infants on up to, up to six, you know, through five-year-olds. Reading has been proven to be a real success indicator for children as they grow and become adults. So, having access to books at an early age will help to stimulate reading, and that's exactly what this program does, and it does it for children of low-income families. So, the funding request was met, was recommended was two thousand dollars because this agency, in their proposal for this past year, has not totally met the requirements for the program. And although they haven't met totally the requirements, the program is so important for the children of our community that we wanted to give them a chance to prove that they could actually meet the requirements, and therefore, that's why we recommended the two thousand dollars. So, that, that equals a total of eighty thousand dollars. Any, I will ask if any other members of our commission would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Dana Osborne. Do you need my address and stuff now, Council? I really just feel like I wanted to speak to the comments that were made in the public hearing earlier about concern about mental health. So, first of all, it is clear that we have not recommended funds specifically for, quote, "mental health services." However, we need to realize that the viewpoint of saying people with mental health and attaching stigma to that is a horrible, horrible viewpoint, and it, it's a disservice to our community, it's a disservice to our families, it's a disservice to our neighbors. And even though we have not said that any of this is for mental health services, I can guarantee you that we are touching people that have mental health issues with these services. And some of those may be homeless people, and some of those may be people in homes, and some of them may be your family, and some of them may be your neighbors. And I am very, very proud that this commission took a really hard look at what was asked and what we can do to serve. It is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Judy Borey, and I live on Graham Lane. I've worked both sides of this, this issue. I've worked and fundraised as, in the Boys and Girls Club, but I've also worked on this commission, and this commission is so important to this community. You know, if we want to follow our vision that we've set for this community and, and our mission statement, then we really need to step up and, and make sure that we take care of all of our...
I'll ask a question. So, some of these, of the four that applied, some of them do try to have their own fundraisers, and some have more than others, some have one, and that's it. Does that play into your, your, your choice of the figures on how they can raise themselves, or, because some are more reliant probably on this endowment? I know that's kind of a statement, not a question.
So, every single one of these organizations does a tremendous amount of fundraising outside. This is a drop in the bucket of their budget. It has to be in the fact that it is a small amount, and they can't depend on it. So, I can guarantee you by the nature of a 501(c)(3), which all of these organizations are 501(c)(3)'s, they do tremendous amount of fundraising. Those that do a lot of external fundraising also likely serve the largest numbers of people. Okay? So, when you look at the food bank, the food bank, and we would, we would have to study this, but the food bank probably does, has higher budget. They may do more external fundraising, but they also touch likely more people. So, if you wanted specifics on what percent this represented of the budget, then you, we would have to do additional study for that. I don't think we looked at how much external fundraising that they did.
No, it had to do with how well they served the city and how they proved that they're serving city residents.
Of course, the food bank just had their major food-raising event, which was kind of remarkable to watch all the mail trucks come in with their food that they've gathered. So, that was pretty, pretty awesome. Any more questions?
I have a couple. Because this has been narrowed down and rewritten many times and very specific that, that these funds only serve city residents, and understanding the homeless population and the mentally ill population, how, Judy, how does the Boys and Girls Club separate their kids to who's the city residents and who lives in our county island? And how do you do that at the food bank and turn someone away and say, "No, you don't get any food"?
Okay. Like Kathy, when we did get our proposals to, to the commission, Kathy gives us a map, and the map shows the, the borders.
Right.
And so, I mean, there are a lot of areas, like the Tomahawk area, that, you know, could sure use the help, but they are in a county island.
Right.
So, we have a, Boys and Girls Club has a program. It's called Kid Trax. I think they're still using it. I've, I've been retired for a few years, so I think they're still using that program. And Kid Trax, you know, tracks it all out, and then a report's run from that, and then they go over it line by line to make sure that there aren't some addresses in there that are, are county island addresses or above, I don't know if it's Brown or, trying to remember the...
I can't.
Brown.
North of Los Dutchmen.
And so, it's out of that, you know, out of the area.
So, so they were actually able to separate the kids that way?
Yes, and utility bills, and, you know, they bring in utility bill, and, and also that tells too.
Okay. That, that just seems to be incredibly hard task.
It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. I mean, you know, there's a lot of work involved in reporting back to, to the commission.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, it's, it's not just...
It's not a free ride by any stretch of the imagination.
No, and they have to, you know, every month have to meet those, you know, stipulations, those benchmarks.
So, does the food bank turn away people that don't have a city address?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember. I don't think they do. However, the next item, I will go into more explanation. There's an update since the, the board looked at this.
Okay.
And it only really applies to the food bank, not the other agencies regarding residency.
And I can answer that, and the commission members can also. Every year when the food bank comes in, one of the first things they say is that they don't turn anybody away. I mean, that is their philosophy. If somebody's hungry, they will feed them. And, you know, we have no reason to believe otherwise.
And I hope that that was the case.
Yes.
You know, but when we have stipulations that are not realistic or not enforceable, I don't want to have those in our contracts.
So, there's a couple of things here that, that, that we'll add. I mean, clearly, the agencies and Kathy, the city clerk, spend a lot of time checking to make sure that the agencies are meeting the requirements of today's contracts, which are when you provide a service to an AJ resident, you're supposed to verify that it is an AJ resident, and they get named by names, and there's been times where the city clerk has said, "Nope, you can't count this person." Clearly, all of these agencies do serve people outside of the city. Thank goodness they raised extra funds outside the city. Okay? Now, I will only now speak as an opinion, and, you know, this, my personal opinion is that this is a pretty burdensome process. It, it creates a pretty big administrative cost on the agency side and the city clerk side for this validation. It would be wonderful, and I hope you can figure out a way to simplify that.
Are we talking about the quarterly reports right now, which was going to be my next question, is how? We've, we've had two different organizations in the last year and a half that haven't been able to meet them. Why is it so difficult? And how are we going to try to streamline that? Is that through your office, Kathy?
Well, and Joel will address that on the next item. But the, the agencies, if you're talking about the food bank not being able to comply, that was all because of specifically an audit, which is a requirement of the, the funding process, and they were, were unable to provide the audit, and there were some errors in their quarterly reports. But as you were just told, that has been resolved. They did get the audit done, and they found a methodology for doing the reports. With the Pinnell County United Way, they, their biggest issue was that they did not file their mandatory third quarter report by the deadline, and in the contract, that's an automatic termination of the agreement, which is why they received less funding.
But did they, so they didn't do it by the deadline, but did they finally get it done?
They, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, they missed a deadline, but complied eventually.
Yes.
And, and sometimes it's staff, you know, turnover. Sometimes it's, you know, things that are not within their ability to control. You know, some of it is, is that type of thing, too.
And they use a lot of volunteers.
Right.
So, that last little bit of funds that they did not receive, does that go back into the general fund?
Yes.
My purpose of bringing this item back before was to be able to have the next discussion, which is the next agenda item, which is we've got to come up with a more effective... Let me give you proportionality of the numbers we're talking about. I don't know if you're ready to go to that, but...
Can we go right into that right now? I mean, can we blend the two right now?
Did you have any other questions?
No, but thank you, ladies. This is a truly difficult job to do because we do have a lot of populations with a lot of needs. So, thank you for all of your thoughts and efforts.
Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I'd like to. So, obviously, two weeks ago, I made a proposal to move money into city operations and take money away from the Health and Human, Health and Human Services Budget. That, in no way was I impugning anything that any of the nonprofits that we have been servicing in the past, that they then somehow have not served our community. I, in fact, support those entities that have applied and are applying again, and I strongly believe that they do service the citizens of our community. I, like I say, in no way impugn the staff for doing their job. I in no way impugn the commission, the Health and Human Services Commissions for doing what they do. They do an amazing job for the guidelines that they, that the city council gives them to... to review the applications and come up with the numbers. I am no way in saying that it is an easy task or that money is not needed to serve the citizens of our community. When I made that proposal, it was just because I strongly believe that government isn't here to fund nonprofits. And I haven't been dissuaded from that. I, I, it is, it is just something that I strongly believe. And, you know, it is something that we, I think, there again, it's my opinion, it's my ideology, it's my idea, it's my principles, whatever you want to call it, and that's why I brought it forth. Obviously, it wasn't well-received, but that's okay. That still doesn't hinder me from doing it. But again, I would like to say, that night that I brought it, there was absolutely nobody else here in the audience except for staff members at a public hearing to, or at a meeting to discuss the budget. And I greatly appreciate what the staff and the commission have done in the past and are doing this year. And I, that's all, pretty much all I have to say for it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to make one comment. I talked to a couple of people that I know in nonprofit agencies concerning what you had brought up about the fundraiser. And what they explained to me, there is, that fundraiser pocket of money is, just like our money, is only so big. You can only have so many golf tournaments. It's the same people over and over again that are contributing. And just like for the different dances and silent auctions, that pot of money still is very limited, that it's not a sustainable fund to pull from, that it can certainly help, but it's, it's not a sustainable pot of money.
Agreed. I am amazed that the same people donate over and over and over. And we all appreciate everything that they do donate. Anything else on this?
So, just for item two, I think the goal would be to get ideas and thoughts as we start to prepare the template for future 2018, 2019.
So, we're going to go on to item two then?
It's up, that's up to you. I, I just was going to talk a little bit about proportionality so that, in terms of the budget, we just had a discussion with some of the folks at the food bank. So, when we talk about their, what they spend, what their expenditures are, it's over $200,000. So, for this current year, the City of Apache Junction is providing $10,000. And they go through a very, what I would call heavy-laden administrivia process to do that. And so, my challenge is, is this year's budget, we're looking at $33,000, I think was the proposed for the food bank for their quarterly updates. How do we become more effective as a government to review them to a firm? Because I believe of the 200,000 that spent, even in a conservative number, I would say well over 60% of the people that are being served there are within the city. So, we're getting, in terms of a return on our investment, a great, great investment. So, I've, I've asked Joel and Kathy to look at City of Chandler, look at Gilbert, look at these other communities that are doing it. And I, I don't know, Joel, if you're ready to comment on that, or Kathy, if we're ready to talk about the, the template and some thoughts as we bring forward in the coming month, in June, to finalize the different language than what we're maybe accustomed to.
Kathy, do I need to announce that to get it into the record?
Yes.
Presentation and discussion on development of a template for future Health and Human Service contracts as directed by mayor and council on March 20, 2018. Joel?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. Like Mr. Powell said, this was a joint effort with the city clerk. So, the general direction was to make the contract more, more user-friendly for the, for the city clerk staff and also for the city management staff so that it could be enforced. Because there were some loose issues on the contract. So, I provided you a memo dated May 14th with the major changes, and I could go through them rather quickly, the more important ones, starting with page one, subsection F, the bottom. Once again, you'll see throughout the agreement reference to the quarterly installments. In the past, there's been some issues where some of the providers tried to get, or were granted, early payments. So, that's being eliminated. They must have substantiate performance of services in order to get that payment. Page two at the top, once again, the quarterly payment is, is strenuously needed in order for staff to verify that they are entitled to the monies that the, that you have, you have basically taken the recommendation of your commission. And so, the staff takes this very seriously so that your direction is followed. Now, the next one I want to point out is E at the bottom. Let's see, that one was, and it goes on to the next page through several subsections. I was called to a meeting by the city manager with Kathy and Matt, and also Mr. Dave Richens, who is, he is a representative of the food bank in Mason. And the concern was that our contract was illegal in by, in asking for residential identities and addresses and confirming that the recipients were actually city residents. And I, I didn't think of any illegality. So, I was asked to look into it, and I did contact DES. And DES was the Department of Economic Security. The individual there, I forget her exact title, but she's up in the upper management, Gloria Hernandez. And I explained to her what we were told, and she said, "Oh, no." She never said it was illegal. She said there were programmatic issues. That means because there's federal funds involved, there might be some concerns about giving out residential names and addresses. She never said it was illegal. So, still though, they do want some changes. And so, what kind of changes can you have? How do you verify your citizens are the ones being affected? Well, you probably can't, based on what they would like to see changed. They want to see maybe percentages of individuals who are served and what percentage would be allowable. And I'm not sure that's a deal point issue that the city manager's going to have to advise me on. But however, some cities do it differently. I haven't received everything from, I think I, I just got the Chandler item on Friday, and I haven't looked at the other ones yet. I haven't received them yet. I don't think Mr. Busby has either. So, we're still looking at that. So, those are some of the issues under EF, E and F. And then G deals with failure to perform, no extensions also under I. Moving on to page four, going to the referred report for community information. There was a problem getting that, and so the city clerk wanted to add the language in yellow. It says, "And proof, and provide proof of such listing with every quarterly submittal." Going to section two, no early release of funds. That was allowed before, and so we're eliminating that. And the problem would be that there'd be early release of funds, but then no backup. And that would be the problem. We would not, or Kathy, Kathy, her staff was not able to get confirmation that the services were being performed. Also, under D, training. There should be some sort of training for the quarter of the report, how it's supposed to be done. And the city clerk was not getting full cooperation, and so she wanted additional language added that allowed that, that the representative of the actual service provider would attend the training. And so, that was added under D.
Let me add a little bit to that. What I was getting is that a person would meet with me, but they would not bring the support staff who's actually doing the intake and filing the reports. So, I was only getting half of the equation, so.
I have a question, comment, something. So, in some of these agencies, we've seen a turnover.
Correct.
In staff, which presents a problem. So, when they turn over like that, the person who was prior to that point doing this reporting, now you've got a new person there who is not trained to do that report. So, how do we bring that person in and train them?
The contract still requires that when that type of thing happens, I have to be notified. And once I'm notified, I will set up another time with whoever the new people are.
Okay.
So.
So, they are given the opportunity.
Absolutely, sure.
But you, that doesn't place too big of a burden on your department?
It's part of our, it's part of our, our work program, so if it has to be done, it, it will be done.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to page six, subcontractors. It was never the intent of this program to allow subcontractors to provide the services. So, that is being more strictly referred to in number nine. And also for number 12 on page seven, the force majeure, that's where, in a, in a contract, if someone has an excuse, or like an act of God, that they could be excused from their performance. We're eliminating that because we didn't want to have any arguments about certain excuses. And so, that's why we're taking that one out. And then page eight, section 18, that deals with tax applicability. And that goes on to page nine due to the chapter eight changes last year, and also the state mandated changes to the tax code. Going to page 10, that's political activities. There was some tweaking that needed to be done on that. The form of, there should not be any form of lobbying or political candidate activities. And so, we, we did add that. And then finally on page 11, conditional approval. This was a concern for council, specifically in one of the directions of staffs. You wanted to make sure that the fourth quarter report was received in order for them to continue on if you accepted the recommendation of the commission. So, that is, it's a conditional approval provision in this agreement. So, they have to have the quarterly report, the fourth quarter. And they must have, have been approved also by the city.
So, so if, if the fourth quarter report has to have been received and approved, then it would also have to go to the Health and Human Services Commission before they could make any recommendations because they would not know if those who had applied, who had previously gotten funding, had met that obligation, and they would not be able to make a recommendation until they knew that. So, it would have to be really timely because we're asking the Health and Human Services Commission to have their recommendation by May 31st.
We, we talked about that internally in staff, and Kathy had a solution for that.
Yeah. What, in keeping with what you had said, you know, a few weeks ago, this allows the commission to look at the first three quarters and make their recommendations based upon those three quarters. But you really needed that, that conditional approval in there where if that agency, because the contracts would be brought to you prematurely in a sense, if that agency did not file that last quarter's report, for whatever reason, that contract is terminated. The, the new, the new contract. Not the, not the existing, but the, the new, the new contract.
Okay, but that still means that Health and Human Services needs to know whether they filed their fourth quarter.
Absolutely, sure.
And has to have that information prior to their recommendation to council.
But that's not physically possible if you want the recommendations in time for budget.
I guess that's what I'm getting, Kathy.
But what this, what this says is that they're allowed to make recommendations based upon three quarters.
Okay.
Three quarters of, of a full year.
Okay.
And you can approve the contract based upon their recommendations. However, that last provision, and, and Joel can add to that, if for some reason that last quarter doesn't cut it, for whatever reason, the contract is ended even though you have approved it, correct?
That's correct. Even if it's been signed, essentially if staff figures out, hey, something's wrong with this. This, this not jive, then that's going to be a problem. And that's what council, that's what we thought council directed.
So, in other words, what you're saying is, is that the Health and Human Services Commission will base their recommendations to the city council for funding of the grants based on the first three quarters of the grant cycle? And that if the funding agency, that the agency that is funded does not comply with the fourth quarter requirements, and they have applied for funds in the next year, we can cancel the next year's contract?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm not sure they're grants. These are more, these are professional services.
Well, whatever, the terminology, whatever the terminology.
Well, okay. I, I still see this, this problem here. And I, I guess I'm not articulating it well enough to, I understand the three quarters. Got it. That makes perfect sense because the fourth quarter. But to, I guess the agencies just have to be smart enough to figure that out, don't they? I mean, that if they don't turn in their fourth quarter thing, they're not going to get what they thought they were going to get.
Well, we can make a point.
Okay, I think we need to make that point.
The commission members as well, to emphasize that these recommendations will be presented. The council, because you wish to do it in conjunction with the budget.
Right.
But their, their portion is you have to turn in that fourth quarter report. It has to be corrected. It has to be timely.
So, in other words, if they, if they were in the prior cycle, their contract is actually pending the, the return of the fourth quarter report.
Absolutely.
And that makes sense to me. That makes sense to me when I say pending.
Yeah, the emphasis is, they, they have the obligation to get the paperwork in, so.
And on this, when do they get their funding? At the, do they get the funding at the start of the first, of the quarter, or at the end of when they have complied with the?
The contract require, gives them a deadline of 10 city working days at the end of the quarter. So, that's, they have to meet that. I do need some time to inspect what they've turned in, and then it's processed after that.
There again, I'm just trying to get it out there to the public so they understand what's going on.
There is no upfront funding.
And just the statement that was made, I used the word grant. And I was, it was said that this is a service contract, and I, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, it was brought up in a previous conversation two weeks ago that, you know, in comparison to funding agencies that bill the government for services, I deem that as a service contract because you have a, a service that is provided and you submit a bill to the government or whatever funding agency for reimbursement. This is just an outright, we, we are granting, we, we are giving the entity money to provide services to our citizens that they stipulate in their application. And if they comply with our quarterly reporting function, then we give them a quarter of their grant.
Money.
Money that we, we have allotted to them for the year. Is that correct?
Yes and no.
Okay.
If, and I do get, I'll, I'll use CAFSA as an example. They provide a cover sheet that itemizes the level of services and gives me a total. If they've only spent, or if they've underspent for the quarter, they get what they've spent. They don't get the, the total amount. And, you know. And in addition to that, if some of those are non-city addresses, I deduct that amount and they, they get what's left.
Okay, that's good to know.
I have a couple of questions. Can we not use sow in the contract?
Took me a while too.
Yeah, it's like, it was bad enough we used S O B on a couple of those things. Let's, let's not go with sow.
It's defined early on.
It was like, really?
That's what happens when you're reading this stuff at midnight and you kind of, what?
Only 11 pages. If we spell out scope of work, it's not going to be that much longer. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they did. And they put sow in parentheses.
Yeah, but then, then you gotta go back and remember, okay, what the hell was that mean again? Because on number 24, we require that they use the E-Verify and all of those procedures on their employees. How does that work with volunteers? Because so many of these places have volunteers. Or is that just kind of, we don't care if they're not getting paid?
Well, this is.
You know what I mean? I don't know what their procedures are. And do we need to go that far into their business?
Well, this is state law that requires us to put that provision in.
Oh, so that's where you got that, okay.
Oh yeah, I didn't make that up. This is a statutory thing.
Okay.
Just like some other things, but this one, we put in that in every contract we have.
Okay, so then on page 11, when it's still talking about the compliance with federal and state laws, it refers to subcontractor, subcontractor employee, but yet we said
Yeah.
No subcontractor, so it kind of.
First line, first and second line on the top of page 11.
And one, two, three, four, line five on page 11, it says it again.
Well, okay, I can take that out, however, I'll take that out. That was federal.
Kind of confusing.
I will take that out, thank you.
Say, say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it refers to subcontractor employees where we clearly say early on that no subcontractors. Is there, and I don't know, because you have the conversation with DES, because we know that the food bank does not turn anybody away, do they give us any? Do they give us addresses or in the city or out of the city or homeless? How, how does that fit into these?
Proposition. And what I want to get at is, I am going to need to run a draft by a few board members of these folks who I work with, I've spent way too much time on about this residency issue. I appreciate all the work that Kathy and Joel are working on.
Absolutely.
But I feel like we're not getting to the issue of what this is about, which is to provide a service to our residents in our community. And I don't see that quite yet with the residence part. And you're going down the residence, how do they get there? And Kathy will be able to talk about it, but it's a very difficult, today, we have issues of where is Apache Junction? And a lot of folks, volunteers are working, they think Apache Junction is Crisman Road. So Kathy does her best to train. But what I want to get at is the simplicity of what we're trying to do here. $10,000, $30,000 of a $260,000 expense is what you're providing. It's a huge help, but it's 10%.
Right.
And so we have to, we have to figure out a way, because I've got food bank board members who are tired of this process. And so I'm going to challenge our staff to do better on this and I'm going to review with our board members, meaning our volunteers that sit on these three different nonprofits, before I bring this back. And my goal is to do this at the second meeting in June, so we have a month. So we've got a lot of work to do. To look and see what other communities, how do they do it? How does Gilbert do it? How does Chandler do the residency issue? Because, I mean Kathy, explain how, how the food bank does it. They try their very best, but they'll make one or two mistakes. But they'll, I was, they've got, they've got a ton of buffer.
Well, and with the homeless that have no address whatsoever, to help them with services.
And victims of domestic violence who stay in a safe house.
Absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely.
I mean, you've got, you've got a lot of, lot of problems with the address.
With the address piece of it. So I didn't know if DES could be helpful. Be, because it's just like for the behavioral health, Simpatico doesn't start until Idaho. Mercy Maricopa goes all the way to Idaho.
Very complicated, yeah.
So it, it does, you know, and it makes services that much harder. And that's not what our goal is, to exclude, but to have the most accurate information for us so that we know that our citizens are being served.
But you're, you're still talking city residents? Or just citizens in general?
Citizens in general. Well, and see, and that's what I mean, like, so do you live in the city limits? Or do you live in a county island? Or are you homeless? Because a homeless person, it, it takes sometimes 30, 45 days to get any kind of an ID, if they can get it. You know, so it's that exclusion of the people in the most need. Okay, I'm not on the soapbox anymore.
Any more discussion?
We sure do. It needs to, we need to have a, a, a real good review and scan of how other cities are able to do it because they can. And, you know, we have Dave Richens in our office last week saying, you know, one thing and trying to figure out a way and method system to be able to, to provide those services in a.
Huge county islands. I mean, Dreamland Village, as long as that's been there since the 50, that's a county island.
Yeah, but proportionally to their whole city, though, it's still not a big portion.
No.
So there is some level of comfort that they must have between their city council and their contracts with the predominance of the service being rendered to, I mean, conservatively, we're, they are saying the numbers are 60 to 70% are within our city, city incorporated limits. So we'll have to figure out, we'll have to work on it. It's still, yeah, this is a work session tonight, we're just trying to work through it.
Okay. So how is it that we, just so the people out there listening, how is it that nonprofits know about this program?
It's in the newspaper.
I have a, a list of folks who have asked to be contacted about it. And in December, usually the first week or so of December of each year, I send out a letter advising them of the process and letting them know that the deadline is January 31st, you know, of the following year. And some apply, some don't apply.
And so, and we put stuff in the newspaper and?
No.
No? So there might be nonprofit entities out there that have no clue that this is being offered to them?
That, that's possible, sure.
And how do we, you know, I, there again, I'm, it sounds like I'm beating things up, but I'm really not because I, I am very adamant, and, and let me set this very straight. Our staff, we, we, the council sets a budget and our staff does an amazing job being very effective and efficient in managing the funds that we put forth for them to do that. Efficiency has to do with doing things, doing things right. Effectiveness is doing the right thing. And I'm no, like I said, I, I am not trying to say that services don't need to be provided. But there again, it was, it was stated that, you know, the, the agencies that put out applications put in for 100 and the, the four agencies put in for $110,000. How do we, and, and this is going to sound very we, you know, agencies, we could have next year, 10 agencies come in here with $300,000 of requests through an application process. And that is going to be very difficult for the Health and Human Services Commission to windle that down, to, to bring that down. And we as a city have very limited resources also, along with, you know, the, the nonprofits that, that are continuously out there fundraising. Uh, you know, I, I work with nonprofits and as, as it was stated, we are, there, it's a finite amount of money out there that we all have to try to draw upon. And it, and it's a, and it's a hard thing to do. But we have to be very cognizant of the direction that we give the Health and Human Services Commission as to how they can allot that money. And also be very cognizant because we are going to be, in the future, our economy right now is going well. I'm not going to say it's going great. It's not in any way, shape or form, you know, awesome or whatever other adjective some people use. But, and, and, and the, and the economic taxing structure that we are going to be working under here now and in the near future and in the long future is going to change that the city has to deal with. And so our resources, the city's resources are going to be tighter and tighter. And this is just what I'm trying to get at, is that we really have to be aware of it and understand that our resources, our city resources are not, and I, and I'm not saying anybody thinks they're unlimited. I'm not saying in any way, shape or form. But that is something that we really have to be cognizant of and, and aware that, that we just can't continuously raise the, the funds that are available for this program.
We lowered the funds this year and if I could.
They were raised $8,000 this year.
If I could interrupt, I mean, that's, that's what we have this council for and that's what we have the boards and commissions for. And as long as we have a quality board like Health and Human Services, I think they're up to the task of, of weeding it out and giving it the right way.
I totally agree. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that.
May I clarify that the original budget was $100,000? We have decreased it dramatically over the years. So this is nothing new.
Kathy, if I remember when, back when I served on the board, it was 120. And so there were some different changes. There was a point when it was about.
Yeah, I don't recall it being that, that high, but it was until I think 2008, it had been in the area of $100,000.
And we did the math today and I think $80,000 out of our total budget is .002 of 1% of the total budget, so. I, can we go on to the next, next item? We got folks waiting for.
Yeah, I think it's fine. We just, just want to clarify that you do provide senior services funding in the Parks and Rec Department that helps.
Okay, so we'll close that and go on to presentation and discussion of proposed resolution number 18 dash 20, authorizing the city manager to execute a loan agreement with Apache Junction Vias LLC regarding the 52-unit low-income housing tax credit project. Joel Stern.
Mr. Mayor, City, Mayor of City Council. I was asked to present this, even though it was Larry's project and he's, he's doing something else tonight. However, I'm glad to present this. I was asked to look at a loan agreement starting in early April. And it was, it was regarding this program, which is the low-income housing tax credit program. Where if you take a look at the colored page, so right after Larry's memo, this shows you, this really sums it all up. I asked for them to provide this, the, the developer, because I did not understand what they were doing. And what this does, do you all have that?
Well, it's under section four.
Oh yes. It's for tomorrow night, the consent.
Yeah.
This sums up the dollar amounts that are being presented. This, what the federal government, state government require is that the city provide some consideration in order to provide the larger loan to the developers. So that's what we're doing. We're being required to provide $34,000. And it's a loan. It is not a grant or a gift. I had some legal issues in the beginning, whether we could gift, well, it's not a gift, but it was subordinating our lien, because we would have, we had a $34,000 lien, which I thought was going to be first priority in the Arizona con, I'm sorry. Well, I thought the Arizona Constitution, basically Article 9, Section 7 says you cannot, cities and towns cannot subordinate their credit. So this was a form of doing that. And so I raised some issues. They have solved that in my mind. And if you take a look at the last page of basically the document, it's a photostatic copy. Just a, it's not very pretty, but it's a beautiful document. It's a $34,000 cashier check. This could be cashed anytime, basically. However, we, we have agreed not to cash it unless there's a default. And they will renew this document on an as-needed basis. So in my opinion, that takes care of the constitutional concern. So essentially, this will bring a 52-unit development to the city. And it will be available for individuals who qualify under the low, low-income housing program.
Not going to be a 55-plus, is it?
Well, 80% of it is, 20% is not.
That's part, I think that's one thing that, when they applied, and I did talk to the CEO today via email. I said, would this development come to the city if you didn't get the tax credits? And he said, absolutely not. And he said that they've been applying for these tax credits for four years and then they finally got them. What's the impact on our city financially? What do we get from this? Well, you're going to get some construction sales tax. And there's some estimates based on the, the project cost of 9.6 million. And the estimate on construction sales tax is around 100,000. Development fees is around 200,000 or so, because it's about 4,000 per unit times 52. There may be some use tax. I don't, we don't know how much that would be because we don't know exactly what they, they purchase somewhere else. So there is some good impacts of having this development. So we have to pass a resolu, a resolution and then we have to provide the money. And then we have to sign this nasty loan agreement, which, once again, I, I went through this, I don't know how many times, but it's, it takes hours to get through. It's very detailed. And I think it was used in Mesa, the template was. There's also a promissory note, the typical, typical things you have when you have a loan. So I don't know if Bryant has other comments on this, but.
This is a public policy discussion. We had about a year and a half ago, a goal to bring a good, quality, affordable housing into the community. This same company brought to us Apache Junction Town Homes, which is across the street from the library. And they have purchased property off TP in Idaho, a little further west. And that's, that was the project. They want to get going as soon as possible. They've already worked, looked at an at-risk grading permit. From my perspective, it's the, the, the quality of the product they bring and the, and the families that come. In this case, 80%, 20% will be beneficial to the community. And then it'll, they'll begin paying property taxes to the school district, fire district and the county.
And so is, is this part of the 15-year plan that the residents can buy the units after that?
Yes, it is.
So the, the loan goes up to 20 years?
Yes.
But within 15 years, the residents can buy them? So we kind of have that weird gap where it might be totally bought out, but we're still owed money.
I believe that they have a huge list. And tonight, Paul Dura is here from their community, they may, may be able to talk to, well, we've, we, we know that they have a list of folks who.
Always.
Uh, yes, a waiting list to fill the 52 homes. And so we, we believe they'll fill up within a couple of years.
Well, and no doubt that it won't take but a couple of months to fill up. But the length of time from when the renters can buy them to when the city is paid in full, that was my question, that gap of five years. Understanding 100% won't buy them or be able to live there for 15 years.
I'll have to get back on that, Matt. I don't know, and Larry's not here on the understanding. I'll have to get back on that, Matt. I don't know, and Larry's not here on the understanding of five years.
Yeah, no, and I'm not sure that's, that's correct. I, I, I believe these units will always be rentals.
Oh, it's not part of the?
I believe the current AJ Town Homes have the fifteen year, after fifteen years, they go to, and the, the rent that those people have already paid go to take down the cost of the homes. But I believe these remain, right, I believe this remains as rentals.
Thank you.
This isn't a lease to buy?
This is not a lease to buy for, in this particular development.
So this is different than the other?
Slightly different.
Well, the second project they did, it's the same thing as that. But we are in third position.
With a cashier's check that if there's a default, we can cash immediately. And if we, if, if we, and if we don't, if it's not renewed when it's supposed to be, my instruction to the city manager will be, get that renewed. If you don't have it by this date, then you better cash that. That will be my, my suggestion to the city manager.
And did they say they would renew it every, whatever?
As much as they needed to, correct.
So what date is some certain that it is cashable? And that, that they no longer have to renew their yearly, not that thirty, I mean, just so we're clear on that.
What's the term of repayment? Is there a term in the contract?
I think it's twenty years.
So it's twenty years. So at the end of the twenty years in two thousand thirty-eight? Or nine, whenever they get this thing done, eight, we will cash the check or the money order, whatever it's called.
Somebody will.
Somebody will.
But we're sure it's a lease, it's not a lease to own. It's definitely a rental, rental situation.
That is correct.
Because of the senior.
Is it going to be an HOA? Or is it going to be gated or what's the?
It's a rental.
If it's rentals, I don't see how it could be.
I don't remember if it's.
So it's just strictly going to be just, wow.
Rental with a lot of stipulations in the lease.
Yeah, I saw that, but I thought there was a lease to buy anyway.
No service horses.
Anything else on this?
Yep.
And I don't see any more questions, so I think we can be adjourned for tonight.